Okay, you're recording. You can start anytime.
Alrighty, good evening everyone. I'd like to call to order the May 11th, 2021 Bridgewater Town Council Meeting. Like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I do have one condolence to read tonight. Condolences to the family of Frank C. Hammond upon his passing on April 7th, 2021. Mr. Hammond served in the United States Navy during the Korean War. Like to have a moment of silence for any first responders or other veterans who have passed as well. Thank you. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, paragraph 18, section 18, excuse me, of the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There'll be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune into the meeting may do so via Facebook Live. And also remind everyone, this, this meeting is being aired and recorded as well, aired live. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 27th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Rushton, any questions?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Chase?
No, sir, thank you.
Any other councilors? This requires a roll call vote.
Mr. Suda.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Six in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on to announcements from the president. I'd like to just take a few minutes here for some remarks. Good evening, everyone. As you're probably aware, tonight will be my last night as president of the Bridgewater Town Council. Taking over the role as president during a pandemic is something that one just cannot prepare for. But I hope my time as town council president is looked back on as a positive one. Just to give you a few stats about what we've been able to accomplish during these unprecedented times, the council was able to pass seven resolutions, six ordinances, 15 petitions, and 46 orders. We also had one of the smoothest budget processes ever at the town level and also with the Bridgewater Rainham Regional School District. I hope this is a blueprint for future budget processes. And accomplishing this by leveraging technology so that we're able to continue meeting as a council as well as boards and committees without skipping a beat. For that, I am truly grateful to the current councilors and all board and committee members. Truly amazing work. I'd also say thank you to the former councilors that are, that aren't here as well. I could not overlook the tremendous amount of work that our town employees have put in during the pandemic. All town departments were able to essentially turn on a dime during the initial lockdown at the very beginning of the pandemic. They were able to keep town government running. This is a true testament to the resiliency of our town departments as well as our outstanding employees. Also during this time, we witnessed many acts of kindness and support throughout the town. Businesses that were the hardest hit by the pandemic did not hesitate to help those in need. Also, we heard numerous stories of strangers helping strangers and neighbors helping neighbors. As I've said in the past, this is the main thing that makes Bridgewater a terrific community. I could go on and on with stories about what I've seen and heard around the community supporting each other, but that would take up most of tonight, which I don't think anybody wants to sit here and listen to. But I do need to say thank you to some people who helped me navigate these uncharted waters. First, I'd like to thank my predecessor as town council president, Dennis Gallagher. I don't think I want to add up all the time spent on the phone texting and emailing all the numerous questions and asking for advice that I needed from Dennis. He helped me without hesitation, and for that, I'm truly grateful. Also, I'd like to thank the town council vice president, Matt Rushton, for all of his work behind the scenes, helping me conduct council business. It is a somewhat thankless job, but one that is very important for the town council. I would also, I would also, I would also like to thank, I'd also like to thank town manager, Michael Dutton, for all his hard work with helping me continue to move council business forward. As with Councilor Gallagher, not only, not only would I not want to add up the hours that we've spoken on numerous topics, but I'm very glad that he doesn't charge us by the hour, or the budget would have been busted. I'd also like to thank someone who I don't think gets a lot of, a lot of credit, but does deserve it. Town councillor Jason Rollins has done yeoman's work keeping me on the straight and narrow, which people know is a full-time job in itself. Having to look at things from a legal perspective does not lead to answers that some people like, but with his expertise, he keeps the town from going in a direction that leads to, as many people know, is one of my favorite sayings, unintended consequences. This is a position that is critical to the town of Bridgewater. Again, I want to thank him for his support. I would be remiss if I didn't thank someone who unfortunately will be moving on from her position as town council clerk. Ann Holmberg has served as a Bridgewater Town Council clerk for the last 10 years. I could go on for days talking about everything that Ann does behind the scenes that keeps the town council moving forward and we, and keeping us in line to get things done. If you were to ask any present or past town councillor or employee what they thought of Ann, you would get many different responses, but the one I think everyone would say is she is outstanding. She is truly someone who, whose contributions go somewhat unseen to the public, but everyone who has dealt with her knows exactly what she brings to the table. We all wish her the best of luck in her new opportunity working for the Bridgewater Council and agent. I could go on and on and on about others that I have had the pleasure of working with. But as most of you know, I try to keep things short and on time. So in closing, I want to say thank you to everyone. I've had the honor and privilege of working with as town council president and want to wish the best of luck to the new town council president and vice president, which we are about to elect. With that being said, I'm going to move on to the reorganization of the council and turning it over to Bridgewater Town Clerk Merrily Hunt.
Good evening, councilors. Good evening, public. At the beginning, I just want to assure you that all your newly elected, the four newly elected councilors have been sworn in and are, are set to go. I see them here and present. So I think the first thing we're going to do is elect a new president for the council, and I will open the floor for nominations.
I'll entertain a motion to nominate Matthew Rushton as council president.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and seconded. Are there, usually we take the nominations not as motions, but as nominations. And then if there is more than one nomination, we vote on the nominations in an election. We don't really usually do it as a motion, but, so it puts me in a quandary about taking it as a motion, because then we have to vote on that motion before we hear if anyone has any other motions.
I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion, and I'd like to nominate Matthew Rushton as council president.
Excellent.
I would like to second that nomination.
Thank you, thank you. So we have a nomination on the floor. Do I see hands for any other or hear voices for any other nomination? Hearing none, then I will suggest that we have a nomination for Matthew Rushton as president of the town council, and I will ask Ms. Holmberg for a roll call vote.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Suda.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus. Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Wonderful. And usually at this point, President Rushton, we turn it over to you to do the nominations and the election of the vice president for the council.
Thank you very much, Merrily, and thank you to my fellow councilors for having the, the confidence in me to hopefully guide us through the next year as a town council. I'll keep that nice and brief, and I'll entertain a nomination for vice president. Mr. Wood.
I'll entertain councillor Chase for position of vice president.
Second that nomination.
Okay. Is there any other nominations for vice president? Seeing that there's none, I would ask Ann to do a roll call vote.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus. I'm sorry, Mr. Columbotus.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Suda.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you very much. I'll now pass it back to Merrily Hunt to set seating arrangements.
Okay, we're going to do it much the same as we did last year. I have colored papers. You can't see them? My husband says you can't see them, so.
I can see it. We can see them. I can see them. Nice and bright.
Okay, all right. They are very bright, and in case we get orange and yellow mixed up or something, I've got them labeled. So this one is called orange, and the other one.
Fuchsia.
Well, I wrote a hot pink, orange, brown, green, yellow, poppy, and blue. So if that, if those, okay, and I'm gonna, we have skipped seats four and five because those are now your president and vice president. So whoever is in seat number one, will you take the first? And you might have to tell us which, which end is number one.
Sorry, I was muted. Yep, the seat number one would be the seat to the far right of the president. So the president's far right, not the far right if you're looking at the president's far right.
Okay, so whoever is currently sitting in seat number one, will you pick a color?
That's, that would be Kevin Perry, because that was.
Correct.
That's what.
That's right.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I'll, I'll go with orange.
One's poppy, so you want orange?
Orange.
And you will be in seat number three.
Number three.
All right, seat number two.
Would be Columbotus.
No.
Yeah.
If it's not Columbotus.
It.
Are you the next one? And Pete, next, where are you sitting?
I was sitting on the opposite end.
You're sitting on the left side.
Well, see, here's the thing. You never really sat anywhere, because the last time we picked seat, that you're, you're right, Mr. Columbotus, the last time you sat, you were on the opposite side.
Pete, just pick a color.
Pick a color, Pete. Poppy?
Yeah.
Okay. Poppy is number nine.
Okay.
Okay, who's in number three, or who was in number three?
Councillor Suda.
Councillor Suda.
How about, you have a green there?
I do have a, well, let me see. Yes, I do have a green.
Then I'll take it.
They're a different color on the back, so that's.
Oh, okay.
So green is going to be seat number six.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna skip four and five, and so the next one is the current seat number six, which would be who, Ms. Holmberg?
Current seat number six would be Mr. Wood.
We'll pick blue.
Blue is number eight. Okay, seat number seven.
Formerly occupied by councillor Chase, well, now the choice should go to councillor George.
I'll take fuchsia.
Okay. Number one.
Perfect. Love that number.
And let's see, what were we on? That was seven?
Yes.
Number eight.
Will be councillor Moore.
Um, yellow? I think that's yellow.
It is yellow, and it is number seven. And whoever is next, whoever's left, who's left over here.
Councillor Gallagher.
Let me think about this for a minute.
So we're all done?
Actually, yeah. Pete, did you pick poppy?
He went for poppy.
Well, poppy was the last one that I had standing, so you have, you and Dennis switched, because you should be two. Poppy was two. I must have pulled.
No, that was orange. That's orange.
This one's, this, if you can see it, it says poppy on it.
But did you want that, did you want that color, Peter, or did you want the other one?
I think he said poppy, and what I pulled.
Yeah, but he can't, but he can't see, but he can't see the name. He can only see the colors. I don't care.
What I pulled was green, Dennis, green. Beside poppy, and I pulled out the wrong one because they were clipped together. My fault, my fault. You guys can fight it out, but I know he's, I remember him saying poppy.
He did say poppy. Do you want to stay in nine, or you want to go to two? I'll let you choose. I'll let you choose.
You're muted. You're muted, Pete.
I'll take nine. I'll stick with nine.
Okay.
Sticking with nine.
Well, no, no, it's six.
Oh, no.
That's where Frank Suda is.
No, Frank Suda's in six.
Yeah, I'm in six.
I picked the one that said light brown, light brown. I'm sorry.
Nine and two it is. Nine and two it is.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
I don't know. So sorry. Can I read these, but can I read these back so that I make sure?
Thank you, Ann. That's just what I was gonna do. Go ahead, please.
Okay, I'm really sorry. So currently, currently I show a new seating order of seat number one, councillor George, seat number two, councillor Gallagher, seat number three, councillor Perry, seat number four, vice president Chase, seat number five, president Rushton, seat number six, councillor Suda, seat number seven, councillor Moore, seat number eight, councillor Wood, and seat number nine, councillor Columbotus.
Awesome. That's how I have it.
Does that work for everybody?
Any objections? Well, Merrily, thank you very much for helping us get the seat assignment straightened out. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for showing tonight and helping us with the reorganization.
Did as much as I could to possibly confuse you, so.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Mission accomplished.
The Montana air, Nebraska air, yeah, Nebraska, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, Montana.
So we'll go ahead and move on. It's 7:24, so we'll move to proclamations. There are none. I'll then next move into citizens' open forum. Any citizens wishing to speak, if you could just state your name and address, and again, keep it to under three minutes, please. If you are referring to the lodging house license hearing, we are having that hearing at 7:10 or now delayed as soon as we get through citizens' comments. Anyone wishing to speak? I see Ray. Okay, there we go.
Thank you, Mr. Rushton. Ray Jamian, 221 Aldridge Road, and I'll be brief. I'd like to, I am the vice chair of the planning board. I'd like to speak to the planning board in the session. And I want to stress that what I'm about to say are my thoughts and nobody else on the board. And I just want to speak to the Broad Street Development, which was reported in the enterprise. And I just want to stress to all of you how difficult this project was for the planning board and how hard we worked on it. It was not easy. I think most of us understood that this project was the project for the town probably for the next 50 to 75 years. It is the entrance into the town of Bridgewater. It is the, the most difficult project. I was on the board in the 80s when the mall came before us at the NIP, and I thought that was difficult. This was the most difficult project. Not that many people commented on it. We had some pros, we had some negatives. The pros were, I, I were correct in saying that we needed something there. The negatives are more in details. My problem was that there was a developer's agreement that was brought before us that had been worked out for a year or two ahead of time. And that developer's agreement, although done in, was proper and done in good, good faith, I think put us in a bind in that we had to deal with that. We either had to reject it totally or work with it. We decided to work with it, and we came up with a plan to approve the project with conditions. And I want to stress here that this project's approval with the conditions that we have imposed were really due to the chair, Pat Driscoll. He worked extremely hard in looking at the details of what we were putting into effect, and he brought us along in this. How this works out, I do not know. I still have concerns. I hope that the town will, if this project moves forward, will look at the conditions and enforce those conditions that were imposed by the planning board. I just want to stress that the planning board did us to try to do as due diligence, and we worked hard to put together a good project for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments and your service on the planning board. Is there any other citizens for open citizens' comments? Ann, do you see anybody? Mark, Mark, go ahead.
Mark Lindy, 56, Michael Road. I just wanted to thank the council for confirming me to the Housing Authority at the last meeting, and I'm looking forward to serving.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for serving the Bridgewater Housing Authority. We appreciate it. Are there any other citizens that wish to speak for citizens' open forum? Ann, do you see anybody? I do not.
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, E to appointments. Roadway Superintendent Paul DeCosta. I'll turn it over to town manager, Michael Dutton.
Mr. President, Paul DeCosta has served as our general foreman for about six years and has done an exceptional job, very attentive to detail, very responsive to the work that needs to get done, and very helpful and responsive to citizens that call and have issues and concerns, at least as much as you can be. And I would encourage the council to ratify his appointment.
Okay, thank you very much. Motion to, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second that.
So councillor George and councillor Gallagher. Okay, any discussion involved?
No comments on my end.
No, nothing.
Any, any discussion from the council? Councillor Perry.
Yes, replacing the retirement of our former, is this the same position, the highway superintendent?
Correct councillor, welcome back, by the way. And it does replace Ron Ledoux. Ron Ledoux retired back in February after distinguished career with the Highway Department, Roadways Department in Bridgewater.
And can I just get a little quick background, quick on, on Paul? Has he been with the town already, or is he coming from outside the town?
No, Paul has been with the town for about six years. He came in, I believe as a heavy equipment operator, very quickly rose up to be the general foreman and worked very careful, very closely with Ron Ledoux at the time to learn chapter 90, a lot of the chapter 90 process, which is quite honestly a lot, a large part of what, what the roadway superintendent does. So he's, he's been with us and has great experience.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the council? Hearing none. Ann, roll call.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yeah.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Suda.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, F hearings. Going to reopen and continue the hearing from 3/9/2021 to approximately 7:31. Petition P 2021-004, new lodging house license, 84 South Street. Norma Jean Begley and William Sabah doing business as the South Street House. I would first open it up and ask the town manager if he'd like to briefly comment.
I would, Mr. President. As the council recalls, at the last meeting where you addressed this lodging house license application, the applicant had, had a number of issues. There were also a number of questions brought up by the neighborhood, folks in and around that particular location. I think your admonition was, council's admonition at the time was to, for the applicant to meet with, with us, the town, and all the representatives that had any, all the department representatives that had, had any say in, in the matter. So we have been unable to connect with the applicant as a follow-up to that last hearing. And we would like to convene a meeting with the applicants and all the relevant departments to go through, quite frankly, a list of neighborhood concerns and make sure that we can address as, as many as possible prior to bringing license to a vote of the council. So accordingly, I would request that the council continue the hearing until June 8th at 7:15 PM. In the meantime, I certainly realize that there are plenty of residents probably on this call and certainly on the prior meeting, prior hearing, that have a number of questions. To the extent I can answer those questions, I'm happy to do so by email, phone, in person between now and, and June 8th, but I, I think it would be less than productive to try to answer too much right now, since we have not been able to meet with, with the applicant. So, so I will leave that with you. I certainly would encourage a continuance to June 8th at 7:15.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. And based on that conversation that you've just had with the council, I would be inclined to think that it'd be more productive for us to, as a council, to continue this to June 8th. Certainly would entertain a motion and then open up discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Second. Councillor George or councillor Perry, do you have any comments?
Uh, I was just, I'm sorry, councillor George, before you, you made the initial motion.
Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm hoping that that the applicants do take the time to sit down, have a real in-depth meeting with the town officials. There are a lot of things on the table that need to be addressed, need to be answered. And my full expectation is, is that we will have everything in order to be able to proceed with this here. Thank you.
And.
Thank you, councillor Perry.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, to follow that up, I, I have been involved with local neighborhoods, residents that have been concerned about it, and. residents that have been concerned about it and there's been questions brought up by them, so I've been privy to some of those questions. So I think again, very important to have this continuance so the town and the appropriate officials can ask the appropriate questions and get all the, the answers that the residents of the area need in order to make a decision on this project. So I certainly recommend that the council go forward and approve a continuance for this year.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Wishing to comment? Okay, I would just add that there has been an ongoing dialogue with several members of the council and some of the residents in that area along with the petitioner, and I, and I hope, certainly hope that that continues. And as a at-large councillor, I would continue to support councillor Perry and any other councillor that wants to help to bring this to a resolution before it comes back to us on June eighth. So having the motion in a second, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Wood.
It's a yes.
Thank you. Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on to our next hearing is the FY twenty twenty-two annual town budget. It's seven thirty-six. I'll go ahead and call this hearing to order and ask again that the town manager, Mr. Dutton, provide a brief explanation.
Thank you, Mr. President. As I usually do with the budget hearing, let me, for the, for the folks that may not have been as privy to the, the here, to the budget formulation process and, and the the work that certainly the Budget and Finance Committee did and, and the Finance Committee did to get us where we are. Let me just give some of the highlights of our twenty twenty-two, FY twenty twenty-two budget process. So when we cobbled together the FY twenty-one budget, we quite frankly had no idea how the pandemic would, would affect our FY twenty-two revenue and spending plans. And as we got closer to this fiscal year coming up, starting July first, we became more and more confident that our revenues would not experience the debilitating slide that we had planned for and quite frankly anticipated. And why, you know, I think we all know that there will be some adverse impacts to the budget due to COVID. Overall, the prospects are better than we had originally thought. And for FY twenty-two, I'm presenting a balanced budget which accounts for as much revenue as we can reasonably predict and, and gets us beyond the COVID nineteen pandemic. Last fall, I'll remind the council that we did rely on our stabilization fund to offset the revenue shortfalls that we anticipated. We tapped stabilization to the tune of one point six million dollars. And thankfully, the council has, will or has replenished that one point six million dollars with, with the essentially our free cash that was certified in, in October, September, October. So, so we had thought that FY twenty-two would force us to dip into stabilization with the council's consent to the tune of another one point six to two million dollars. We are very happy to report that this budget does not contemplate any transfer from our stabilization fund. And for those that don't know what the stabilization fund is, it's essentially our rainy day, rainy day fund. So it's, it's our savings account in the event that, that the economy turns south dramatically and, and we are in a position to have to ensure that we can provide the same services that we had been providing prior to a downturn. So that, that's the primary purpose for that stabilization fund. This year's primary budget objectives were quite simple. Avoid any budgetary practices that balance current expenditures at the expense of meeting future years expenses, such as postponing maintenance and upkeep of our facilities and equipment. Two, to fund reoccurring operating costs with reoccurring sources of revenue and plan for contingencies by adhering to the reserve objectives set out by the council. And then three, to maintain our stabilization fund that I just spoke of, equal to roughly ten percent of our operating budget. So the financial principles, those among them, set forth in the council's budget resolution established the overall framework for our fiscal plan and, and management of our resources and was designated to ensure that the town's sound financial condition remained just that sound now and into the future. So on, during this COVID year, I'll call it, budget year, in addition to what I just described, we also continued to project revenues and estimated expenses according to the issues that, that had been swirling around due to the emergency declaration. So our other objectives, based on, on our COVID year budgeting practice, was simply to maintain current staff levels, reassign our limited staff to address new exigencies or new issues presented by COVID, fund only necessary municipal functions, refocus on economic rebuilding, and, and as we have for many years, do what we can to preserve the town's infrastructure and improve it. I won't go through too much of the revenue projection piece of the budget, other than to say we, very basically, and again, for, for folks, non-councillors that, that don't know this, Prop two and a half limits our real property tax increases to two and a half percent per year. We use that, that's a real estate tax we consider to be very secure. So, so we were comfortable using that without, without anticipating any sacrifice in revenues. We have had a banner new growth year. Our new growth is estimated by the assessor on an annual basis and, and Tony Solomati and his, his crew, including Shelley McCauley, have really done an exceptional job of bringing that new growth number in prior to the real, the real work on our budget. So our new growth is, for FY twenty-two is one million five forty-four, which is exceptional for, for Bridgewater. And then, as you recall, the council voted the diff, which supported, excuse me, supported the reconstruction of Elm Street, which spurred a significant amount of economic development in Bridgewater. And out of that new growth, a portion is allocated to that district, the Elm Street district, and that is, that is four hundred thirty-one thousand is directly related to, to the new growth on Elm Street. So, so that will go to pay off the portion of the bond that is due in FY twenty-two and then we will continue on until that bond is paid off. So we have used the governor's cherry sheet estimates, which appear to be somewhat close. They're generally at or, or below the, the revenue that we receive from the state in terms of state aid. So we continue to use that, carry that number through our budget process. Local receipts, local receipts, we have a, Bridgewater has, has a wide variety of local receipts that, that really have no common theme. They range from, you know, building permits to licensing fees to, you know, copy, you know, payment for making copies, you name it. It all gets sort of lumped into local receipts. So we've based our local receipts, traditionally based local receipts estimates on a five-year forecast this year and last year, obviously, but this year as well, we've adjusted that five-year outlook to a cop, to account for the pandemic. So we've adjusted our local receipts and scaled that back slightly specifically in the areas of lodging and meals tax. And we've also scaled back our building permit, building permit revenues slightly, just anticipating a slowdown of building that, that the, I think the building office is essentially confirmed for us at this point. The one thing I will mention, because I think the council should be aware of it, we, as, on an annual basis, we use a portion of the ambulance receipts to essentially fund our general budget, which obviously funds our, our fire department. So essentially, we're offsetting the expense of paramedics with a transfer from the revenue that we receive from doing ambulance runs. At least that's, that's how it's set up from an accounting perspective. We had seen, initially was sort of counterintuitive to me when the pandemic struck, I, you know, I think everybody in the back of their mind thought, oh, the medical community is going to be very busy now. Well, the medical community was very busy in some respects, but patients resisted all temptation or all, some, some cases all need to go, be transported to the emergency room or to the hospital via ambulance. So we actually saw a fairly steep drop in ambulance runs, which was, was obviously reflected in the revenues, a significant drop in the revenues. We've rebounded. But we have scaled back our, our ambulance receipts projections for FY twenty-two, and we've reduced our original plan. Plan transfer is now under two million dollars. It had been slightly over two million dollars. So we, we do estimate that ambulance receipts will increase gradually over the next three years and, and be back to normal levels in FY twenty-five. I think that's a conservative estimate, but that's what we're going to go with right now. So with those projections in mind, we're, we're meeting our expense obligations and we're budgeting a revenue surplus of one point five percent pursuant to the council's budget resolution, which was voted at the beginning of the process. And I just will point out that for those that don't know, we budget a revenue surplus and those surpluses of roughly one point five percent if all goes well. And then the unspent expense appropriations make up, at the end of the year, make up free cash. So free cash is the slang term essentially for what's left over at the end of the year, unreserved fund balance. And that is the most significant source of our capital fund, capital funding. And without a fair amount, significant amount of free cash, we're, we're unable to support many of the planned purchases and, and improvements that, that actually you'll see for first reading this evening. So with those revenue estimates, I'll just go through very quickly parts of, or highlight parts of FY twenty-two budget that might vary from prior years. All budgets reflect contractual increases, to the extent that there are some. They do not reflect any COLA increases for expiring collective bargaining contracts. We have budgeted the facilities position in the general fund at fifty-nine thousand. A portion of that, that salary will also come from the enterprise funds, but the general fund does have that in it. And I think over the next three to five years, the facility budget will grow as we begin to address the maintenance needs of all of our buildings. Public safety does reflect a slight increase, reflects growing population and growing need, but it also reflects positioning for essentially planned retirements, both the police and fire department. Also reflects position in the fire department that we believe will ultimately bring a safer housing, bring, bring safer housing to Bridgewater and also provide a little bit of revenue to support a, an inspectional, fire inspection component again. The BR district tuition has been increased based upon commitments made last fall to our, pursuant to our revenue sharing plan. We had a lot of good conversations with the superintendent and business manager. So I'm, I'm pleased to be able to meet the district's FY twenty-two assessment at about three point two eight over the FY twenty-one base. And, and that provides the district some additional funds. It's also important to note that the operational assessments levied on both Bridgewater and Rainham, Rainham are only a portion of the, of the district's total budget. I think some people are unaware of that. The district also gets a significant amount of chapter seventy funding through the state. And at last check, I don't know if this is still accurate, but at last check, that, that was a little bit north, twenty-three million dollars. So, so the state is a big partner in that. So when we lobby and we, we ask the council to make, or councillors to make calls on behalf of, of education, that's why. It's because chapter seventy is such a, such an enormous chunk of, of all school budgets, but certainly Bridgewater, Rainham. Out of district vocational students, we estimate a decrease by two going to Norfolk Ag School. That decrease brings our number down to zero. And we won't know until October if that projection is correct. So we are holding with that. If we have to address one student going to the Gaggy, then we will do that at the time. The other vocational school assessments are up, but that reflects really just simply per pupil increases. So we've got a total increase of a hundred and eighty, hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, or about ten percent. And as I say, that's not a raw increase in their expenses. That's just simply a per, per pupil calculation. This, this budget is the first where we will be making an attempt to implement a true DPW. We are allocating a DPW director's salary, as I mentioned, I believe, last meeting across all of the relevant functions. So general fund will take a portion of that. And other than that, really, there have, have not been any significant changes to the budget. And I, I think I will leave it at that. I will thank Budget and Finance Committee. I think Budget and Finance and the Finance Committee worked hard to make sure that, that we would have a balanced budget and an effective budget without, certainly given the, the pandemic, but, but I also want to give my thanks to certainly the assistant town manager and finance director and all the department heads and the finance team that put together the budget. It really is a team effort and, and the folks that put it together take, giving you an effective balanced budget very seriously. And so my thanks to them. So with that, I'm certainly happy to answer questions and, and I will turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. And I would just add, before I ask if there's any general questions from the public, I want to remind people that this hearing has been duly advertised in the enterprise and on the town's website. And all orders relative to the fiscal twenty-two budget may finally be voted this evening and itemized under L legislation fraction. So I'd first move to ask if there's any general questions from the public. Have any general questions from the public? And I don't see anybody?
Scrolling through one more time.
Sure.
Sure. No, I don't see anybody.
Okay, is there anybody from the public speaking in favor, in favor of the budget? And I don't see anyone?
No, I don't either.
Okay, I would ask if there's anybody from the public speaking in opposition to the budget? Again, I don't see anyone. I'll move on. Is there any questions from town councillors? And I saw councillor Wood and then councillor Gallagher. Councillor Wood, go ahead.
Thank you. Actually, I have three, and they're very short, so maybe I'll just roll them off. Mr. Dutton, you talked about the growth, the new growth this year of, I think it's one point two million, which is substantial. Year over year, we've looked at about eight hundred thousand or thereabouts. Year over year, we've looked at about 800,000 or thereabouts. I, I attribute a lot of that to the Elm Street area. And then we had you discussed about the payback to the diff. So the first question is, is the, is the majority of that new growth in the Elm Street area, or is it spread around to other areas of town?
It's new growth is actually a million, 544. And that is, it's sort of spread around all over town. The portion attributable to the diff district is, I believe it's 432, 432,000.
Okay. So take a night out. It's still a growth of 1.1 or thereabouts.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Second question is about the ambulance receipts. I heard the, I think it was the fire chief a couple of weeks ago, talk about ambulance receipts being off by someone in the neighborhood of $300,000 because the college was not in session. Our reports are the college will be back in session this year. So did that play into your formulation of the amount of money we can take out of the ambulance fund?
It did. So the, the college, I think there, the college was not in session, certainly impacted ambulance receipts. And I think also just generally the pandemic influenced ambulance receipts. There were obviously fewer people for a number of months, or fewer people out on the roads, fewer people going to work, fewer people putting themselves, you know, in, in danger, I guess, is, is, is best way to put it. So, so the need for ambulance services really did drop right across the board. But, but it did, that did play into a reduction in what we were originally proposing for a transfer. But keep in mind, I will, I will just remind counselors that, that over the period of a number of, well, three or four years, we've been able to transfer the ambulance fund really was never set up properly. And, and the way it was set up required that you have that money in there. If you're going to appropriate it in for the general fund. We're finally at a point where we actually have that money sitting there and it can be appropriated in. We're not anticipating the receipts, but we actually have that funding there and can transfer it in.
Finally, most importantly, I've had conversations with people about the budget, how the budget process works, that sort of thing. You talked about the schools, which collectively we could support three or possibly four schools as well as debt. And this year it amounts to about 57%. So that leaves 40, which I think is appropriate. And then about 43% on the town side. My understanding is that once we commit to the assessment, that's a guaranteed payment to the, to the various twitions, whether it's BR or BP or whatever, as well as the debt services guaranteed. So the question is, are we confident in the level of state, state support this year coming up? Because it is a budget number. And are there any contingency numbers that, that either at the state house or others have been talking about? Because the economy is, is up and down, left and right at this point. And those, those revenues could change mid, midstream, which comes out of the 43%, not from the 57%. So can you address that a little bit?
Great question. And I think the best answer is we, I think the governor's proposed chapter 70 funds, funding was slightly less, less of an increase than, than local aid received this year. So your point is well taken. We, we generally, and I think the superintendent also takes, takes the chapter 70 figure that's proposed by the governor's budget, because that rarely gets reduced. I can't honestly, can't think of a year where that has been reduced. And so generally the House and certainly the Senate is more inclined to try to increase that, that funding. So right now, albeit it is, the economy is, I don't think anybody can tell a certainty where the economy is right now. But we have sort of budgeted that about as conservatively as, as we can at this point.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Welcome, Council Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. As, as chair of the budget and finance committee, and it was alluded to earlier by Counselor George, this process was not as bad as we thought it was going to be going into this, which really started in last, last September. We were very concerned about our local receipts. We're very concerned about state aid, given the circumstances that we were in and are still in now. We met several times during these past several months. And we met many times jointly with the finance committee. And the revenues that you see and the, and the expenses that you see are, are accurate based on the projections and the work that our finance director and town manager put together. This is a $65.5 million spending plan. And some of the things when we go into the budgets, we all talk about our local receipts. And I'm not talking about the taxes. I'm not talking about Prop two and a half and our tax bills. I'm talking about local receipts makes up only 5.2 million dollars of, of that 65.5 million. But that's a very key number when we start the budget, budget process, which the biggest factor of that is our motor vehicle excise tax. And Council Wood is correct. We don't know what's going to happen with the economy because fiscal 22 hasn't even started yet. It doesn't even start for another six, seven weeks. But today, the House, I mean, this today, the Senate came out with their budget and I don't think there have been many changes to that. But usually if there are any significant changes in, in appropriations to cities and towns relative to state aid, usually the school departments are very protected and are not cut in nine seat cuts that have happened in the past. Usually it's the general government, unrestricted local aid usually that gets cut if that happens. But the situation that I think we see ourselves in is last fall and winter, we couldn't have people in restaurants to sit down to eat. Now there are people that want to go out and can sit down to eat. But the problem is a lot of establishments can't find the help to serve the people at the moment. So if things have kind of gotten weird in a sense that, you know, help is hard to come by at the moment. But it's good that people are willing to go out and sit down and eat at our local restaurants because that's a key factor to some of our revenue projections. But I just wanted to thank the town manager and his financial team and the, and Counselor Georgia, Counselor Rushton, and the finance committee for the work that we've done all these past several months. This was a fairly easy budget, no question about it. So, and we all think the next one's always going to be worse. You know, hard times do hit us at, at times. But we were able to get through this one, meet all our obligations, which is very important. So I just want to thank everybody for the, for the work that's put into this and hopefully we'll get through this year and meet our projections. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Counsel Perry.
Thank you. Again, obviously being away from the council for a couple of years and just getting back into it. Just have a couple of quick questions for the town manager. Can you basically just tell me what percentage wise this number of this budget goes above last year's number? Was it 1%, 2%, 2 and a half? Do we have that approximate number?
It's, I believe it's 3.17% over last year's budget.
Okay. Thank you. And then just on a couple of the line items, I think you mentioned earlier, you've you put in for some funding for more maintenance of the town buildings. Is that under the town buildings budget as listed?
Correct. Correct.
And then that, that's in a, so there's a position being established to, to oversee the, those town buildings, you said, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Fantastic. And then in community and economic development, I'm just curious. Anything outside of what we're currently doing in that department as far as working toward improving the economic and development, say of downtown, do we have any other help coming or planning for an ombudsman of some sort to, to help that go in a positive direction?
We do. You won't see, you won't see it in the budget because I, we at this point are anticipating some one-time expenses to bring in some specialized help in, in certainly in terms of the opportunity zone. So, so you'll see some coming before you over the next three to six months, you'll see some items that are requested out of our one-time, as we call it, our one-time stabilization to pay for some, some of those, those programs. So, but you won't, you won't see that in the budget at this point.
Okay. And, and then one other thing I was thinking of was just to attorney Gallagher's comments, talking about local receipts, especially with excise tax. I do know a lot of the new car makers right now are having trouble finishing making new cars. I think new car sales are probably going to be down in the coming year. So obviously that certainly will affect our excess tax number. I hope not too greatly, but it's certainly a possibility with what's happening with the manufacturing of computer chips across the way. So I just wanted to throw that comment out there. And then let me just see. So the question was in regards just to the school budget. So our current budget number that you have for the BR school district is matching what this, the school department is asking for in this 22 budget?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. On the same, and the, and the proportional amount obviously goes to Rainham Town Meeting, I believe next week.
Yep. Now, according to what I've seen in the past, yeah, this sounds like it's going pretty smooth this year. So kudos to everyone involved. Thank you very much for that input.
Any other counselors with any comments or questions?
Mr. President. Yeah, someone asked me, is this budget including money for additional employees to the highway department? Talking about laborers?
This budget does not for this, for right now, it does not include additional labors. We've got a number of funded positions right now that will continue to be funded in FY twenty two. But we've been unable to fill those positions because we can't find the qualified candidates. So we have not increased the total number, but we have not, the total number of authorized budgeted folks down there. As soon as we see a little bit of a turn, whether it's the economy or just, I'm not sure what, how to describe it. But once we get a sense that we have more candidates that we can use to fill these positions that, that we have funded, then we'll begin to increase those again. Over the last eight years, we've consistently increased the number of employees down there. And so we're, we're not at a bad level right now. But our problem all of a sudden is that we can't find the qualified candidates to fill those positions. So, so no, to answer your question, counselor, no, no additional bodies this year. Our focus is going to be filling the positions that, that we already have funded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. So is there any other counselors, any comments or questions on the budget? Okay. Seeing none, I just have two brief comments. I, I would agree with Counselor Perry. And if I could ask Mr. Dutton, if we could just keep an eye in the fiscal 22 budget of those tax receipts. Not quite sure the impact it's going to have on automobiles and on the bottom line budget. And I just echo some of the comments that were made already, you know, a lot of hard work. And I'm very pleased to see the process and involvement of the BR school district in the budgeting process. My first year on the council, there was a lot of discussion back and forth. And this year seemed to be very smooth. Did an excellent job and, and I would certainly, and just want to sort of comment on Counselor Gallagher. For many of the positions, Mr. Dutton, Mrs. Solmont is a finance director. These are paid full-time jobs. But Mr. Gallagher did an unbelievable job as the chair of the budget and finance committee. Really held some really good meetings, really good discussions on the budget. And, and that's in addition to his role on the council. So I just want to throw that out there. It's a cooperative effort of a lot of people, but Counsel Gallagher really did an incredible job on the budget and finance subcommittee. And with that, hearing no other questions or comments, I'd close the hearing at 8:09. And then I will move into licensed transactions. There are none. Presentations, we have none. Moving into the town managers report, back to you, Mr. Dutton, with the Mitchell School update.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Not a whole lot to report. Work does continue as planned and on schedule, if even slightly ahead of schedule. Some concerns, obviously nationwide about material shortages on our job. We have not experienced that just yet. And, and the contractor actually did an excellent job of repurchasing a lot of the materials that, that are on getting to be on site this week, next week and the week after. So kudos to them for recognizing that shortages were coming. So we, we have not experienced a shortage and we certainly haven't experienced any delay due to, due to shortages. So knock on wood, that continues. Draft project budget, as I say at every meeting, is 67 million, the all-in budget, if you will, is six, draft is 67,647,982. We are still awaiting the MSBA to confirm and approve that draft budget. And on the call with them today, they indicated that they would approve that within the next month. So, so we've been waiting and waiting and waiting. Why is that important? Well, we want to make sure that everybody's on board with the same budget, obviously. But we also want to get the revised tax calculator up on our website. Something same, same look and same feel as the one that we had up prior to the Mitchell School debt exclusion vote. But we want to get that up so that people can, can see exactly what, what their particular house would be paying for the Mitchell School going forward. So as I mentioned, the timeline is still good on the, on the construction completion date on target. July 8th, 2022. And for those interested in tracking the progress or just watching as the building committee makes the decisions it needs to make. The next meeting is Monday, June 14th at 6:30 PM. So Monday, June 14th at 6:30. And as I always say, the, anybody can find all the information on the entire project at BridgewaterSchoolProject.com. Again, that's BridgewaterSchoolProject.com and certainly happy to answer, answer any questions about that.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions from the council? Counsel Perry.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, do we have a, just based on, obviously we have that budget number for the cost of the school. So after the state's reimbursement, do we know what the approximate number per thousand, what the average home might see on their tax bill at this date?
Believe we were estimating, and I, I don't, to answer your question, the short answer is I don't know. And, and I don't want to, I wouldn't want to give a number because precisely for the same reason that we don't want to put the calculator up there with the draft budget. We want to make sure people get exact figures. But I believe back when the, the vote was being taken on the Mitchell that a first year bond payment was going to result in about, I believe it was about $700 per household. And, and it will be substantially less than that now that we've got got all our construction figures in and, and the draft budget is significantly lower than the 80.6 million that we had originally authorized the debt exclusion for.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay. Seeing none, move to COVID-19 update.
COVID-19, we have seen good numbers over the past few weeks. We're down to 19 active cases. I think last meeting I reported 20 active cases. So very slowly but surely we're, we're getting down to, to just a handful. BSU has three students in quarantine, meaning they were either exposed or they have an active case. And the Department of Correction reports no cases. So we're doing pretty well on the numbers count. I think as the council knows, BSU has been approved as a regional vaccination site and they are set up and giving vaccines currently in the Kelly Gym, which is right on Park Avenue. They will take walk-ins, but, but certainly residents of Bridgewater. They will take walk-ins, but but certainly residents of Bridgewater can can sign up to assure themselves a space. But you can do that at mass dot gov and then and then follow the vaccination links. So again, that's mass, M A S S dot gov. Follow the vaccination links and you can sign up for space at the Kelly Gym. So I think the bottom line on that is our area residents, you know, Bridgewater, you know, Rainham. The middle borough, Halifax, you don't have to go to Gillette. I think there's still a lot of people that think you have to go to Gillette to get a vaccination. You can go to B S U. It's right down the street. Easy and quite frankly, it's free. So so I would certainly encourage people that intend to get vaccinated, go go over. It's it's super easy. I was down there the other day and it's a friendly place. They're not going to hurt you except for the needle, so so I do encourage folks to go there. In terms of Bridgewater, overall Bridgewater residents who have been vaccinated, so we've got a little over thirty five percent have been fully vaccinated. And we're almost almost fifty percent of folks have had at least one. One in the series of two shots, so so we're getting there. We're right about in the same percentage ballpark as other area towns, so hopefully B S U opening up. Will boost those numbers a little bit. So that's what I have on COVID nineteen, but happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any questions from the council? Counselor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, how much in cares allocation money do we have left with Plymouth County?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the exact number, but I would say it's probably well over a million.
Okay, so are we still trying to formulate things so that at the end of the year? We leave as much. As little money on the table as possible.
Absolutely. So cares we we can expend from our cares allotment or allocation. Through December thirty first of this calendar year. And and the finance director certainly worked really hard with the fire department and other departments to make sure that we can. Expend the money that's available to us, keeping in mind that the. We can't just spend willy nilly on what we want. The expenditures have to relate to COVID expenses. And obviously, the federal government gives the state government and the county government and local governments a whole. A whole list of guidelines on what we can use that money for. So for those that don't know, Plymouth County has been the essentially the dispersing agent for those funds. They allocated funds early on, actually before they received the federal, the federal funding. They allocated that funding among the all the cities and towns in Plymouth County. And created essentially buckets that we would draw off of. So we've submitted somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen or sixteen reimbursement requests. We've got, I think we've received about eight. I don't have a concern that we'll get the rest, obviously. But Plymouth County goes through a very rigorous review process on all those expenditures. But but that's a very long answer to a very simple question. But your the simple answer to the simple question is yes, we're doing everything we can to spend that money down appropriately.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay, see it done. I just had one, Mr. Dutton, just to follow up. Since the vaccination clinic has started at B S U. Have we had any traffic concerns with people trying to get to the clinic? Or any impact on the neighborhood in that area with any complaints to your office as a result of the clinic?
No, we've had nothing. That's a great question that the site has been quite slow. The startup has been quite slow, which which is probably fine. So I, based on the way they're set up and based on their process, I don't foresee any traffic issues. But certainly Chief Del Monte and and Chief McDermott are keeping a careful eye on.
Okay, excellent. And just another just quick follow up. Has there been any discussion with the B R district to specifically target high school students? Middle school students over the course of summer for vaccinations in town?
I believe there has been some good communication between B R and B S U on that. And I do, I don't have much to offer other than that. I do see the superintendent is on the call. I don't know if he's. If we're catching him at a bad moment, but if 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 I could defer to him, I'm sure he would have better answer.
I don't imagine anyone from the council would object.
I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Swenson, if you wouldn't mind, good evening, sir.
Good evening. I'm not coming out of surgery. I have negotiations tonight with our paraprofessionals. How's everybody from the council? Thank you. Just so you know, just to answer that question, we have had communications with President Clark's office. And they have been very gracious as B S U always is to the district to allow us. To have our twelve to fifteen year old students be able to offer them a vaccination. Availability at B S U. So we're currently in the early stages of that. Our Assistant Superintendent Ryan Powers is working close with President Clark's office. And we're trying to set up a B S U day for our B R students. We're looking to see, you know, make it, you know, an excused absence for that day if a student should decide to go for the vaccination. And excuse any tardiness on that day as well. Again, it's Pfizer, so it would be a two shot situation. So within a twenty day, a twenty eight day period, there would be a second day that the students, if they do decide to participate. Would then have to go back for their second shot at that time. We're going to offer it to any faculty as well who may not be vaccinated at this point. And then at that point, if there is additional vaccines through B S U, we may offer it to any family members of our students as well. So again, we're kind of in the infancy stages of working this out with with B S U. But as soon as we get more information, I'd be happy. We meet with the Department of Health every Tuesday. So I can share that information through Eric Badger or through Mr. Dutton. And he can report that out, or I'd be happy to come back to a town council and report that information out once we have a plan in motion.
That's excellent. Thank you, Mr. Swenson. We appreciate the comments this evening. And I'm glad to hear that we're taking advantage of a fantastic university right in the center of town that's helping the district. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for the town manager on COVID nineteen? Okay, here and none. I'll move to item C, items for next meeting. Is there any councils that have anything for the next meeting for the town manager? And if you don't, don't want to bring that up now, certainly, you know, Ann will be in touch to provide a timeline for items for the next meeting. So we'll move to discussions, recruitment process, town council clerk position, Counselor George.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So as I had mentioned in my comments. Our town council clerk, Anne Holmberg, will be moving on to a new opportunity. Within the Council of A, Council of Aging in Bridgewater. So bad news, we lose her as our town clerk, town council clerk. Good news is she still will be working for the town in a capacity that she's just going to do a fantastic job. So with that being said, I believe it's been almost ten years since we've had to fill the position. I did have a conversation with Mr. Dutton, Ms. Williams. With kind of their thought process around a short term solution and then obviously a long term solution. The short term solution will probably be to be able to get attempt to come in. I don't, I don't think, and I could be wrong, but I don't think we're going to be able to fill the position in time. So the stopgap would be to have attempt to be able to answer the phones. Handle things as much as possible with the ultimate goal of filling the position. So I know there were a few counselors that are on the council now that were around when the position was being filled by Anne. And I believe that there was a committee. Not sure if it was two or three counselors that were appointed to work within the. Process of recruitment, vetting applications. Getting it down to a particular point of recommendations, then obviously filling the position. With whomever we can attract. So I just put that out there, you know, as President, I don't know if you want to. Do you have any comments, if you wanted to get comments from other counselors? But I think, you know, that that to me in a nutshell would kind of kind of be the process that I would recommend. But I'd open it up to the floor.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, Counselor George. Counsel would.
Thanks. So as I recall the process and and can can help out here too. But we did form an ad hoc committee of the council, three members, I think it was. So so the suggested process here, I think, would be that, you know, we come up with. You know, a job description, which I I'd suggested maybe Anne help write that. And then, you know, advertise the job of of Ms. Williams, collect resumes. And then hand that over to the committee for for first level vetting. And how the committee kind of go through that process first before bringing it back to the back to the full council. You know, one of the things we have to remember is this position is a is is an employee of the town, but it's really an employee of the council. And it's it's a position that's responsible for the council. We determine things like pay rates and things like that. So we should take a look and take this very seriously about how we're going to pick the person. It's it's our, it's our representation to the town. When someone calls or whatnot that wants to reach out to us, it's that person that is the first one response to it. So I suggest we follow the same process that we did years ago. I think it worked well then. I think it'll work again.
Thank you, Council. What? Counsel Perry?
Thank you. For what, obviously, ten years ago and technology certainly changed in ten years. What is our, where do we advertise for this position? Were you looking at Indeed and some of those websites? We have municipal websites where we're posting this job. Where exactly is this job being posted? And is the procedure, is it, is it our choice as a council to hire? Or is it going through the town manager's office? I'm just want to be clear on the on the procedure.
Well, I think the the process is is that the town manager and assistant town manager Kimberly Williams have really worked. Very hot over the last couple of years to develop a process for hiring. And and it's a process that's been very successful. So I think that the ad hoc committee, my hope is that they would work in hand in hand, most likely with Kimberly. To work with Anne to get the job description, get it advertised, get it into the places that we have been successfully advertising. And get those resumes back to the ad hoc committee with some guidance with Kimberly through the interview process. That's how I envision it. I'm not saying it's such and stone, but I certainly welcome any other comments. Counsel Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to the town manager and the assistant town manager, I do think this is a position solely within the discretion of us, the council. I think that. The the sooner you appoint an ad hoc committee, whether it's two or three people. The the job description needs to get formed, as Counsel would said. And then an advertisement should go out to a couple of publications, as Counsel Perry alluded to. And then I think the committee can can go from there. That's just my take on on the process as far as that goes. But one of the things I do, I really do want to see. Is it be advertised as a full time position and that we pay a salary equivalent to a full time position. And I know, we all know that that Anne goes above and beyond the timeframe. Of normal hours for for the work that she does for us and has has done that for several years. And I've tried to make an attempt to adjust that in prior prior years budgets. So I certainly hope that. If I'm on that ad hoc committee or not, I hope that it advertises a full time position and it's the salaries advertised commensurate with. But I think it's important, with all due respect to the to the town manager, this is town manager. This is our position and we try to keep, keep the process within the council.
Thank you, Counsel Gallagher. I would just comment on that. I I do agree with you in principle that it is a position that's reporting to the council. I would only say that in my comments that, you know, on the employment side as a town. The process for hiring has been one that's been improved. And my hope is that that ad hoc committee, although would be in charge. Would certainly lean heavily on the town manager and assistant town manager to make sure that we're recruiting. In a similar fashion and finding the best, highest quality candidates. That's my hope. So I certainly would leave that to the ad hoc committee, but those are just my comments. I just defer to Counsel Chase, who I saw his hand up first. Go ahead, Mr. Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to point out that. I think we can't overlook the fact that. The position is, in my opinion. More complicated by virtue of the need for remote access by use of Zoom. And it's my hope that we can return to in person meetings in the council chamber at the earliest opportunity. I certainly think that from the perspective of a new hire in that position, certainly a temporary person. It would be much less to to take on all at once, I think, if it were, if they did not also need to contend with. You know, the technology of remote meetings, but that's just my my comment on that point.
Thank you very much. Counsel Colin Bodes.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo Counsel Gallagher's statement that this, I think. While I understand we do need to conform to the, you know, established town hiring processes, that this this really needs to be the council's domain. And while we we shouldn't fail to lean on the town manager and assistant town manager for help in this. We do need to remember that we need to serve our needs and as a council, as a separate body from the administration of the town manager's office. Given that, I would urge that we lean heavily on Ms. Holmberg. She's done, you know, an incredible job. Adapted to every new situation and she obviously has more insight about the job than anyone else. So hopefully, we can, you know, kind of take her out to lunch and do an exit interview and get her, get her opinion on how we should proceed. So that's, thanks.
May maybe convince her to stay. Counsel Perry?
Yes, and that's kind of bringing it to what I was, my point was, I'm concerned about timeline. Obviously, I know that she's planning on leaving by the end of this month. So obviously, that's going to leave us kind of stuck in the next month or two. I know this process is going to take some time to find a real good candidate. I know the talk is talking about maybe a temp in this position. But you know, by the time you you train a temp to handle this position, now you're retraining potentially a higher after that. So I'm not sure what the best process is. I'm not sure if it's possible if the town manager's secretary can help us with some things. Or again, I'm just trying to think going forward, what's going to be in the best interest to help this council continue to function in the coming months. Because it is not going to be easy in the coming months without Anne there. And I just don't know, even though she is going to be in town in a new position. How much back and forth can we work with her that she could guide somebody new in the position, whether it's a temp? Whether it's helping, you know, if if it's possible for the town manager's secretary to help fill a couple of gaps. I'm not sure what's legal, what's not, but I am concerned about timeline. And I'm afraid this is going to take a number of months to fill. And I just don't know what kind of position it's going to put the council in not having someone like Anne in in this position.
And I would say, Counsel Perry, I echo those sentiments. There's nobody more nervous than myself coming in as the president, knowing that Anne was leaving. But I've had some initial discussions with the town manager. There's going to be a strong support from his office. I I do think that many of the employees, you know, are maxed out already. already. So I think that although there would be limited training of a temp really to handle direct emails, phone calls, and those types of things, minutes, all those things, I would imagine relatively light on training to to keep that process moving. But in terms of setting the agenda and all of the notes that go with that, you know, I think that Mr. Dutton's already aware of and has previously in the past had to step into that role. I would want and say that, you know, in the formation of an ad hoc committee to replace Anne, that I would entertain people who are council members who are interested to to email me their interest. And I would ask that if you are interested, I would think that a lot of time and energy has to be placed in this. And to your point, I do not want to be having this conversation eight months from now in this position gone unfilled. So if you're interested in participating on the ad hoc committee, I I really think that has to be, you know, very quick move in meetings that take care of the issues that are before us, such as, you know, essentially getting that job description done and getting it posted while some other processes are happening in the background while that's out and advertised, rather than sitting around and waiting for a month for those resumes to come in. There's probably some steps that we could get done in the in the interim. So I would say with that, I will just see if there's any other councils that have any other comments that they want to make in regards to replacing this position. Okay, I don't see any. So I I think the appropriate step here is, again, to put out a call for any member of the council that wishes to serve on an ad hoc committee, understanding the work that's involved. I will leave it to you. Certainly wouldn't manage it. It's it's going to be that chair's prerogative, your involvement with the town. I would hope to see that they can provide some guidance and, you know, get the description put together and help you advertise it. But certainly, send me an email. Today is Tuesday. I would think by the end of this week would be enough time to go ahead and appoint three members of an ad hoc committee.
Mr. President, if I may just briefly, if an ad hoc committee is appointed, I would just ask whoever chairs that committee to make sure that they reach out to me as well, so that we can make sure we're not violating the open meeting law with, you know, this this interviewing and selection process and any other, obviously, assistance the chair may need as part of the the employment process. But I just want to make sure we comply with the open meeting law as well.
Excellent point, and thank you for your offer to help the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Question, Mr. President. Do we do we need a formal motion to form the ad hoc committee? I guess that'd be through you to the town attorney.
I I believe the ad hoc committee can actually be formed by the council president. But you can also do it by motion. Either way would be perfectly sufficient. You you may want to do it by motion in this circumstance, just because it does seem like there may be some discussion about whether or not that's the route you want to go.
Is it appropriate to make that motion now?
I'll second. I'll second that motion, Counsel.
Counselor Wood, go ahead. You going to make that motion?
I I am making that motion, yes.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Gallagher. Any other discussion?
I just, I I think that i- if this passes, obviously, I I encourage the president to fill the seats as he would make appointments for any other, any other committee.
Thank you, Counsel Wood. Counsel Gallagher.
Yes, Mr. President, I don't have a problem with this ad hoc committee being formed, but I would remind the council is that we do have a strategic planning committee, and we have a review committee. And perhaps, you know, those committees could have taken the place of an ad hoc committee, or, you know, that's what they're there for. So but this certainly is for one one focus only. I understand that, so I wouldn't be opposed to this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from counsel? Counsel Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So ultimately, I know, obviously, with your new position as president, we're also potentially making changes on all the other committees of the town council. Are we looking to tie this all together along with this ad hoc? And maybe it is to Counsel Gallagher's point, maybe some overlap with that particular committee that just might go hand in hand.
Sure, thank you. I I I'm I'm under the prerogative right now that I would like to form the ad hoc committee and find three members of the council understand that, other than the other subcommittees, such as the one that I'm on, Public Safety, that hasn't met in eight or nine months, because no issues have arisen. This is extremely important, and so that's why I'm reiterating the time commitment that's involved, because I would like to see the process continue at a very quick pace. Done properly, of course, but, you know, at a quick pace. So I I think somebody might be on strategic planning that is doesn't have the time commitment that might be involved in replacing this position. So I would prefer to keep it as a temporary ad hoc committee. Any other council comments? Okay, we have a motion. So go ahead, Anne, if you had a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Excellent. Moving on, legislation for action. Order zero F Y twenty-one zero forty, transfer order.
Mr. Mr. President, you skipped committee reports.
I apologize. Okay, committee reports. Are there any committees that have anything to report out? Seeing and hearing none. I'll move to L, legislation for action. Again, order zero F Y twenty-one zero forty, transfer order, capital item, special purpose, high pond meter project. At their meeting held on five-three-twenty-one, the finance committee voted five to oh to recommend approval. The budget and finance committee voted three to oh to recommend approval on five-three-twenty-one. This measure may be finally considered this evening. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Hey, we have Counselor Chase second. Okay, we have a second roll call vote.
Mr. President.
Um, excuse me. I apologize. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, I would like to just get a quick overview of this, since myself and Counsel Moore are just new to the council. Could we just get a quick overview from the town manager on this?
Sure, Counselor. This this appropriation or this transfer, capital item transfer completes the meter installation process that we've done townwide. We had carved out High Pond originally because it's, for lack of a better word, it's a unique community. We now have an arrangement with High Pond and the Wyman's to replace the meters in there, and we're plowing ahead with that.
Fantastic. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving B, order zero F Y twenty-one zero forty-one, transfer order, Water Main's Haywood to Kirk Street project. At their meeting held on five-three-twenty-one, the finance committee voted five to oh to recommend approval. The budget and finance committee voted three to oh to recommend approval on five-three-twenty-one. This measure may be finally considered this evening.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, Mr. President, just a quick.
Counsel Perry.
I'm sorry, thank you. Just a quick overview from the town manager again on this.
Certainly, this one is actually quite simple. It's taking the remaining balances in two other water main installation projects and transferring it to the Curve Street Water Main Installation Project. So it's just sort of recycling funds that were left over in one capital project account into a new capital project, similar capital project account.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Any other comments? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yep.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Item C, resolution R F Y twenty-one zero zero six, amend June twenty-twenty-one meeting date. This measure was not referred to a committee. Fourteen days has elapsed. Per section V X one-one-one of the council rules and procedures, therefore, this measure may be finally considered this evening. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. What are the amended dates that this is referring to, just for information, please?
Sure, I believe we moved the meeting, I don't have the paperwork right in front of me, to June eighth, because it the other June second date backed right up to our May meeting.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Item D through J. Anne, can we vote on these collectively under budget orders?
Um, I would defer to the town manager, but I know that it's been past practice to take them individually.
I would prefer to take them individually if we could.
Okay. F Y twenty-two-two budget orders. At their meeting held four-twenty-six-twenty-one, the budget and finance committee voted three to oh to recommend approval of the F Y twenty-two budget orders. The finance committee voted five to oh to recommend approval of the following budget orders on five-three-twenty-one. This measure may be finally considered this evening. First is order zero F Y twenty-two zero zero one, budget order F Y twenty-two annual town budget. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Wood.
Yeah, just for the the new counselors that haven't gone through this. So we don't usually vote on revenue. We only vote on expense, and although the budget process focuses entirely on budget, on revenue side, to figure out what the expense could be. This order is simply, as Mr. Dutton addressed before, the ambulance receipts, which is a key component, plus some other ones. So this is the only time that we would vote on 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 the revenue side. And I will also make note for the new counselors or those that don't recall. Ambulance, the reason we're voting on ambulance receipts is there is another ordinance that's been in place for almost a decade now that limits the amount of ambulance receipts to one million dollars to be transferred from ambulance receipts into the general fund during the budget process. And so any vote above that needs to hit a Mr. I think it's a, is it a two-thirds, or is it, yes, it's a two-thirds vote to to do this. So we we need to hit the six mark in order to pass this. And if it doesn't pass, then it really messes up the rest of the budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Wood. Any other comments? Counsel Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to go back to early discussion, so I believe the the amount of the ambulance receipts that we're looking to use were, in essence, to try to avoid using stabilization fund monies, correct?
Uh, I could answer that, Mr. President. The transfer of ambulance receipts is sort of an is an annual process. And it's designed to, we can, we take in the ambulance revenues into a special fund. Out of that fund, we then transfer it to the general fund, but essentially, it's it's transferring monies to offset the cost, the employment cost of the paramedics that that we employ. So so we do this on an annual basis. And and certainly, the council's rules and procedures accommodate that, or the ordinance accommodates that as well.
But again, as Counsel would point out, was a million dollar limit based on prior ordinances. So this obviously is a special situation. If if this wasn't the case, then additional monies would have to be taken from stabilization to make up for the additional revenue that we could not take from ambulance.
I'd say that's a fair assessment.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, moving on, item E, order zero F Y twenty-two zero zero two, budget order F Y twenty-two, Water Enterprise Fund Budget. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on, item F, order zero F Y twenty-two zero zero three, budget order F Y twenty-two, Sewer Enterprise Fund Budget. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colin Botes.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on, item G, order zero F Y twenty-two zero zero four, budget order F Y twenty-two, Transfer Station Enterprise Fund Budget. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Counsel.
Through you to the town manager. So the the past couple of budget cycles, this enterprise fund has been an issue because recycling isn't returning any revenue and a couple other things. And and we've had, I think, for the past two or three years, the need to transfer additional funds to cover the costs. So can you speak about this this budget this year and the risks that we may have to move additional monies later in the budget year?
I can. Thank you for that question. We had done a, last year, we had done a mid-year price increase on some selected items, and that seems to have been quite effective in boosting the revenues enough so that we can offset the 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 additional expenses and also offset the loss of revenue on on the recyclables. Excuse me. So we intend and anticipate closing F Y twenty-one in a balanced situation. And the same principles used in the formulating the F Y twenty-two. We'll have a slight increase across the board on the F Y twenty-two cost to to dispose. And and we should be, if all goes well, we should be balanced at the end of F Y. balanced at the end of F Y twenty two.
Any other discussion, Counsel Columbotus?
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, what are the gross revenues that the transfer station generates? Do you have that figure?
Uh, growth, I'm sorry.
Gross revenues, or, you know, tickets and, you know, funds, you know, revenues they collect.
So the gross revenues for this year should be in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. It should also be pointed out that not only did some of the fees be increased, the the usage at the transfer station is also up. So this fiscal year, fiscal twenty two, we should see hopefully a real operation down there in the sense of it being able to cover its true costs. Knowing that the cost of recycling and and pick and the pickup of the recyclables, those market rates go up and down all the time. But with the increase in some of the fees and usage, with the very competitive private trash pickup, a lot of people are resorting to the transfer station to get rid of their trash, which I think is the one of the best bargains around. So that hopefully we will see at the, a year from now, we'll see if that is true to hold, and that the revenue of over five hundred thousand, or whatever the revenue is, it increases to cover everything.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, I move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood. Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
All set in.
All set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, item H, order zero F Y twenty two zero zero five budget order. F Y twenty two Old Scotland Links Golf Course Enterprise Fund Budget. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Wood.
Yeah, same general question to the town manager. So I noticed that we're approaching one point six million dollars for the total cost. We know that the that the main mortgage has now been retired. The second mortgage on the clubhouse, I believe, is still active. You, are you projecting a good year for golf, is my question, because again, we move money from the general fund to the golf enterprise for a number of years to cover cover expenses, and I just want to make sure that we're we're on solid ground this time.
Uh, yes, we are anticipating a very good year for golf. We've seen a very significant bump during the pandemic, and we believe that without being too extreme, we believe that that's going to carry over in the F Y twenty two.
Any other questions? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Uh, yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Moving on, item I, order zero F Y twenty two zero zero six authorization of revolving funds. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Item J, order zero F Y twenty two zero zero seven CPA Reserve Funds, F Y twenty two. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to oh to recommend approval of this four twenty six twenty one. The Finance Committee voted five to oh to recommend approval of this measure on five three twenty one. At their meeting held on two twenty four twenty one, the Community Preservation Committee voted to recommend approval. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll.
Counsel Wood. Just want to make sure, we're in we're in zero zero seven, right CPA funds, right?
Yes.
Okay, so so for the the new folks, again, they can have a much larger discussion with the CPA team, but these numbers that you see here go into five specific buckets. They cover open space, housing, et cetera, and this is a matching plus what you see on the on the tax bill each year, that's that's where the numbers come from. So what we're doing here is is recognizing that that revenue into the fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Counsel Perry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank Mr. Wood for the clarification. So thank you.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
So, Mr. President, a question going back to the general budget item. And I'd made mention of the six must vote for the ambulance funds. But we didn't actually separately vote the ambulance funds, and I want to ask the town attorney if we shouldn't have voted that first before we voted the general fund.
I think based on how the the votes have gone, I think it's it's fine, but yeah, maybe in the future you want to change that up.
Yeah, because the vote on the ambulance fund specifically says two thirds, not majority. And the vote on first item was majority.
I I agree.
Okay, so in the few, I'm I'm fine in the future because we obviously had a
Correct.
Miss vote here.
That's absolutely right. But the way the vote has gone, it hasn't impacted anything, so.
Thank you. Moving on, M, old business, we have none. N, new business. Item A, order zero F Y twenty one zero four two rescind Elm Street Roadway Project Loan Authorization. A motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Chase. I'm sorry, Mr. Columbotus, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, none against.
Item B, order zero F Y twenty one zero four three transfer order, First Street Roadway Betterman. A motion to refer to Budget and Finance Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Perry.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Item C, order zero F Y twenty one zero four four, acceptance of a grant, complete streets tier three construction grant. Motion to refer to Budget and Finance Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So this is an acceptance of the grant, but there's a whole packet behind this, behind this piece. It wasn't, at least included on the agenda. I just want to make sure that the counselors are aware that you know, there's a multi-page application that shows improvements on Main Street as well as Broad Street. And I want to focus for a second on Broad Street, because so here we're just allocating money, and as as Counselor Attorney Rollins has said, we can't order the town manager to do things, but clearly in the grant process, it clearly identifies bump outs and crosswalks on Broad Street, which is critical to the overall strategic safety plan of of downtown area. And I I want to make sure that everyone, as we go through this grant acceptance, which is just a dollar amount, is fully aware of what the process is there. It touches two sides, you know, multi-multi pieces of my district. But it's it's critical that we make these safety changes, especially on Broad Street, now that the project appears to be stalled or or canceled, that would have in, would have added to that, so. You know, I I think in addition to moving this to the committee, if we can ask to have the 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 Trump box link sent to everybody, so they're aware of what's behind it, that'd be, that'd be great. Thank you.
Welcome, Counsel Wood. And if I could, too, just add, I see that as part of the Complete Streets Grant, much-needed pedestrian LED flashing signals up at the Bridgewater Housing Authority on Main Street. And so I'm happy to see that there's a number of improvements. Many of the residents at the Housing Authority access Main Street, get down to Cumberland Farms, get down to Roach Brothers. Many of them are on foot and not using a motor vehicle. So I'm happy to see that those improvements. So is there any other comments from the council? Seeing none, I move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, item D, order zero F Y twenty one zero four five capital transfer order, general fund. Motion to refer to Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I have one question.
Counsel Wood.
The, to to through you to the town manager, the the Toro Groundmaster mower, is that for use like on Legion Field? I want, I don't want to confuse it with golf course equipment. It's it's for other use, per, correct?
I believe so. I can, I can certainly confirm before you ever get to a vote, but but I believe it is.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Uh, nine in favor, none against.
Item E, order zero F Y twenty one zero four six capital transfer order, water fund. Motion to refer to Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move for a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Uh, nine in favor, none against.
Item F, order zero F Y twenty one zero four seven capital transfer order sewer fund. Motion to refer to Budget, Finance and Finance Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, move to a roll call vote.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Dr. Perry.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes.
Mr. Columbotus.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Thank you. Moving on, item G, resolution R F Y twenty one zero zero seven. A resolution and recognition of Gay Pride Month. Counselors Gallagher, Chase and Rushton. I will defer to Counsel Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, this is the the first reading. This does not need to be referred out to any committee. We can simply leave it on the agenda and come back on May twenty fifth and take a vote on this. I will not read the proclamation at this meeting. I will read it in its entirety at the next meeting, simply because this is a first reading. But the explanation behind this is twofold. Is number one is we we had a group of citizens that will have been before us uh, for the past couple of months. Many of them have emailed us. Many of them have spoken to us at Council Comments, at Citizens Comments and Citizens Open Forum. And as a matter of fact, at our last agenda, at our last meeting, they were on the agenda under a presentation portion of our meeting. I know that Counsel Chase put together an ordinance that has been referred to the Rules and Procedures Committee. And I believe that the language in in that piece of legislation would suffice the the and address the will of the group that wants to us to recognize this day and simply put the gay pride flag flying in our in our town. However, I think they're under the impression that that would come back and we would have an actual vote and and a resolution to that prior to the month of June. But simply timing is just not there to have that done. In addition to that, they also wanted a a resolution or proclamation prepared to recognize Gay Pride Month in in our town. So to suffice them, I put everything in this resolution that addresses the recognition of Gay Pride Month, and it also acknowledges the full support of the council. If so, they choose to vote to approve this in a couple of weeks, that we will fly the gay pride flag in the town of Bridgewater between the week of June thirteen, June seventh and June thirteenth of twenty twenty one. So that's the purpose behind the resolution. I I think that we have, we have heard so many times from people, citizens that come before us under council, under selectmen, under Citizens Open Forum, that they address concerns and they don't get any results. And I know that with all good intentions, the ordinance has been written and it's in committee. But if we didn't put this forward, if something like this didn't come forward tonight, I don't think that any timeline would have been met to suffice the concerns and and what they would like to see in the town to recognize June is Gay Pride Month. So this is why this is being brought forward. Um, and I hope that I have the full council support, and I appreciate Counselors Chase and Rushton co-sponsoring this with me, and I hope that in a couple of weeks, it gets its full support of all my colleagues.
Thank you. Gallagher, Gallagher. It's getting, it's getting late.
Yes.
Counsel Chase, any comments?
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I would certainly echo all the comments that Counsel Gallagher has has offered tonight, and I think that's, this is a very important resolution for all the reasons he's mentioned. And we've had tremendous support from those in attendance at our virtual meetings for some time now for this issue, and I'm, I And I, I think that this is a wonderful attempt to address their concerns and to satisfy them, I hope, by ultimately seeing the, the pride flag flown in the town of Bridgewater. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other council member comments, discussion? Council Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to go along with councillor Gallagher's concern for timeline. So then next meeting of May, we would have a second reading and then take this up for a vote on June eighth. Is that correct?
No, we can, we can vote on this resolution in two weeks.
In two weeks, okay. So we don't, okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, I'll just quickly close out. My intention in supporting this is for many of the reasons that have been echoed by councillor Chase and councillor Gallagher, having conversations, looking at the timeline. Certainly want to support our citizens, particularly citizens who are members of the LGBT community and some of the many conversations we've had and work in diversity, equity and inclusion issues throughout the town. So I think this is a show, a strong show of support from the council that we're, we're hearing residents and we're reacting to those comments and the input that we're hearing from our citizens. And that, and that's ultimately why we've all signed up to be on the council. So I, again, along with councillor Gallagher and Chase, hope to have the full support when we come back for the next reading. Thank you. So moving on to resolution, next item, letter H resolution R F Y twenty one zero zero eight. A resolution relative to diversity and respect. And so I guess I would follow councillor Gallagher's previous statement that he won't read the entire resolution. But I really have put this in to, for a number of reasons. One, in anticipation of being the council president, I wanted to show strong support as a leader and president of the council as I sit in this position over the next year, that much of the work that the town has done through the various groups. And I will single out the town manager, Mr. Dutton and assistant town manager Kimberly Williams, the work effort and energy that they've put into diversity, equity, inclusion, not just in preparation of council meetings, meeting with various stakeholders and citizens in town, but what they've done about the process, even in hiring in the town. And so I think it's important for us as a council to really show strong support for the work that they've already done and to support them for work in this area as a council and as a community over the next year. And again, in a couple of weeks, when we come back, I again, hope to get a strong showing unanimous support from the council that we're all in support of diversity and equity issues and the continued work, not only of the town manager's office, but us collectively as a council. And the resolution that councillor Gallagher has proposed just prior to this one is one of the signs of strong support and that as a council, we're listening and supporting those efforts. Thank you. Any comments? Councilwood.
I'll just comment because I should have gone the last one, but I, I think this effort is, is great. I mean, we live in a very diverse and wide range of different, different people and we have to respect each other. So I, I plan to support it. I would have added for the last one, I had for this one, that two weeks ago, the embassies of the United States were given permission to fly the flag, the gay pride flag at their embassies. And so if, if they could do that at an embassy to show the world the support for the community, I think as a community in Bridgewater, we could do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwood. Any other comments from the council? Councilmore.
Yeah, I would, I would echo the previous comments. You know, I think as a new councillor, it was exciting to see both of these on the agenda. And also hearing comments, Mr. President, it was exciting to see this being a priority in the way that the council behaves. So I appreciated seeing that.
Thank you, Councilmore. Any other councillors? Okay, I'll move on to letter O citizen comments. I would ask that any citizen that wants to comment, please indicate by raising your hand or waving so I can see you. State your name and your address, excuse me, your street, and try to keep it to three minutes, please. Do you have anyone? Vern Domingo. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, councillors. I'm Vern Domingo, thirty six Saddle Drive, Bridgewater. And I'm very pleased that council is putting this on the agenda to talk about these issues. We all know that we hold in our hearts a sense of appreciation for all people. Sometimes we need to say this publicly. As a parent and many of your parents, we know that we want to say this to our children so that they know explicitly that we love and care for them. So I applaud that this is being discussed. It'll be a great.
Mr. Domingo, you've muted yourself accidentally.
Is that?
You accidentally muted yourself.
Oh, am I on?
Yeah, you're on now. We can hear you.
It'll be a great moment for our students in the high school, middle and elementary schools, particularly those who are in the LGBT community. They will feel that they really belong in this town. As a parent of a transgender son who has gone through the school system here, he would be very, very pleased if this is passing. He will feel much more welcome in Bridgewater and that's exactly what we want. A community of inclusion and acceptance. So thank you very much for raising this and I sincerely hope that it passes council.
Thank you for your comments. Any? Sam Baumgarten.
Hi folks, Sam Baumgarten, sixty Short Street. I'm just feeling super excited tonight for these last two resolutions and for the attitude and philosophy that I'm hearing the council being ready to take. I have always felt through the last year or so, when we've struggled with issues across the country, equity issues, that the council should be in the lead. And I have a feeling now that you're going to be willing to stand up and speak out on any issues that are harmful to any particular populations in our area. So I'm really appreciative of seeing these two resolutions and I hope they will pass. And I look forward to the council's leadership in diversity, equity and inclusion moving forward. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens for citizens comments? Ms. Cudaro.
Rebecca Fleisch Cudaro, one thirty five Deerfield Drive. I wanted to thank councillors Gallagher, who I think initiated this, but also Chase and Rushton for setting things up so that even though there's going to be a delay for the alternate. I'm not going to have the right wording. It's not a resolution, but the original piece that councillor Chase had set forward, even though that will not be happening in time for this, y'all found a way that we could have the flag flying by June seventh of this year. So I'm very excited about that, also to hear all the support and to know that we are showing the community that the proclamation that the town council put forth, I think it was in twenty sixteen, that's hanging up at the academy building, that we are showing that we're acting upon that. It's not just words, it's actions. And both resolutions are very heartening. The pride flag and also the diversity and inclusion. So thank you, thank you very much for that.
Thank you for your comments. Mrs. Hanson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street, Bridgewater. Thank you for letting me speak. I am liking what I hear. It sounds like this council is going to be listening to the residents and I'm pleased to hear all the discussions tonight. And congratulations to all the, everybody in their new positions. I didn't get a chance to speak at the, in the beginning in the forum, but I just wanted to acknowledge Ray from the planning board, and I can't pronounce his last name, so I'm not even going to try. But I hope the town council can support the planning board in their decisions, especially on that Broad Street project as he mentioned. They did spend a long time on this and I did see, I may not always agree with the planning board, but I did see that they worked hard on this project and they even said that they want to make sure that there's, they do it right, so there's no issues. And I always question the fact that how can, I mean, I'm not understanding, but how can you have agreements before a project goes, before all the, the boards and the committees? It does put them in a bad spot. So I question, and I've always questioned how they can do agreements ahead of time and then expect these committees and boards to do what they're supposed to be doing. And it puts them in a, in a hard place. But I do hope the town council supports how the planning board made their decision. And I thank again, everybody for their time and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other citizens for citizens comments? I don't see any, Anne, if you could, if you see any hands up. I don't see any on my screen.
No, I don't see any others.
Okay. Moving on to letter P council comments. I'm going to start in the order that we were reassigned tonight. So starting with councillor George.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate you and also Vice President Chase on being elected to lead the council for the next year. Thank you for your first meeting. You've done an excellent job. And I also want to thank everyone for their input. This was a very long agenda, very long one to take over, but I think it went very, very well. Again, I'd like to congratulate our newest councillors, looking forward to working with you all. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor George. Moving on to councillor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, I want to thank councillor George for his year as council president, where we were never able to meet at the academy building, except I think he had one meeting that with two other councillors where they tried to start the trend of getting back in there, but we were quickly, quickly rushed back to our, our Zoom meetings. But we had, it was a long year, I know for you, councillor George, and I appreciate your leadership this past year as council president during all of our COVID nineteen Zoom meetings and of course, on the, on the budget and finance committee and so forth. So I appreciate that. And I want to congratulate councillor, councillor Rushton on becoming president and councillor Chase on being vice president. And welcome back councillors Perry and councillors Colombo to the council. And obviously I want to welcome our newest councillor, councillor Eric Moore to the council. Hope you've got a lot out of tonight. Lot of our meetings, they might last two, two or three hours, but some are shorter. Not many are too longer and we have to, we have to vote to go after a certain time. So don't worry, you don't have to worry about that. And also I know our council clerk has one more meeting, at least with us, but I, I wish her well in her new position and I'm really sad to see her go. She's been a star for us throughout the years, particularly for, for, for me, as, as my time on, on committees and so forth and all the work that she does behind the scenes. I also want to bring something to all, all my colleagues here on the council into, if you could mark your date, I'm working with Noonan Waste Management for townwide cleanup on June fifth. I'm trying to work out the final details with them, but that seems to be the date that's good for them to bring the truck in and help us out with bags and T-shirts. So as soon as I get that, I'll have it out for our May twenty fifth meeting. But I would challenge all of the district councillors to at least rally a few people in their districts to come to the, to the cleanup and take the assignment in, in their district and help clean up the town so it looks really great this coming summer for whatever festivities we can have. Unlike past townwide cleanups, this one will be, will be congregating and meeting down at the Town River Landing off of, off of Spring Street. So I have more details on that, but I just want to have you etch that in your calendar and challenge you to bring some people from your district to help us clean up the town for the summer. And on that note, I will say good evening.
Thank you, councillor Gallagher. Councillor Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, it's, it's good to be back and I thank you to the councillors that had previously mentioned welcoming me back. And also we thank councillor George for his work as the immediate past president of the council. I, I have been prior president before. I know how much work it takes and I am sure it's ten times more difficult doing it in a pandemic and a Zoom format. So thank you, Mr. George, for all your work and what you did as, as town council president. I want to congratulate as well councillor Rushton and councillor Chase and look forward to working with them and their leadership with the council for the coming year. I know they'll do a great job. I also want to just publicly thank the voters that came out from precinct two to, to elect me for the position. You know, it wasn't a contested rate, race, but quite a number of people did come out to vote and I do want to thank them for their support and look forward to representing them over the next year, few years, obviously, as a precinct representative for precinct two. I want to publicly also congratulate, I didn't have the chance because he was recently hired permanently is fire chief Michael McDermott. I know he's been acting his interim, but he's was recently hired as a permanent chief. I just want to publicly congratulate him and know he'll do a fantastic job. And also congratulations once again, Paul DeCosta on his appointment as the roadway superintendent. And just a couple of side notes. When I heard unfortunately that Anne Holberg was stepping down as our, as a secretary, the first thing I wanted to do was walk in and announce my resignation, my recently accepted position, because I know how important Anne has been to the council and four years I worked with her prior, when I was on the council before, it was a pleasure working with her. And she is actually one of the reasons why I did want to come back to the council. So I want to thank Anne, it's, she's going to be a very difficult person to replace. I wish her all the best of luck with the council of Beijing. And I still probably will be stopping by and visiting her at the council of Beijing, asking questions, I'm sure, along the way. But again, I want to thank her for all her years of service and we'll look forward to hopefully finding someone just as good to work with. And then lastly, I do want to thank the town and the various departments that usually help out the Bridgewater Alliance with our recent fishing derby that we held this past weekend. I know it's a coordinated effort by a number of different departments that helped us get that offer running. We do it every year. So I want to thank those people involved and including that town manager, because I know he helps us out and making some arenas for that as well. So again, happy to be back, look forward to working with everyone here this year and we'll see how it goes in two weeks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Perry. Councillor Chase.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank you and I'd like to thank our outgoing president, George, because certainly his guidance over the past year has been critical, I think, to the council's success. And it's very much appreciated. And certainly I know that you in filling issues will do just the stellar job. I have no doubt about that. I certainly want to thank all the councillors for your expression of confidence in me as I assume the position of vice president, just a heartbeat away from the presidency. And I really do, I'm, I'm very honored by it and I appreciate that. And I'll certainly work very hard to maintain your confidence. And of course, welcome to our returning councillors. Councillor Colombo and councillor Perry. Councillor Moore, our brand new councillor, who after tonight will probably look to leave the council, but I hope he won't. I know he's going to make some valuable contributions. So in the interest of time, I'm going to end my comments, but I'm very pleased with the, the comment we had tonight. I'm pleased with the general tenor of the meeting. And, and certainly I'm very pleased to serve as your council vice president. And certainly, I'm very pleased to serve as your council vice president. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Chase. Councilor Sousa?
Well, everyone said it all. But I do want to thanks outgoing President George for all the effort he did in his tremendous year. And congratulate yourself taking over as president and the guy named Fred being our vice president. And I want to welcome back Dr. Perry. Welcome, our new member. Moore and Bill and the other guy. Peter, welcome all back. I think we can work together for another year. Maybe we'll even get together in one meeting at least in, in the council chambers before this year is over. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilor Sousa. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd also like to thank Counselor George for his services, president. As a regular observer of the process for the past few months, I really appreciated his leadership style. And I also thought he works hard to just amplify the voice of our residents. I appreciate that. I also want to congratulate our new town council president and vice president. In a similar vein, I've also watched both of you in the council meetings, and I'm excited to see you in the new leadership roles. I think, I think it'll be great. And I also look forward to working with the rest of the town council and the town manager, and I thank everybody for their warm welcome through the election process. And in particular, I did not have the opportunity to work with her, but she had been a huge help to getting me on boarded to the process and certainly lived up to the reputation that everybody else, I think, has commented on. I wish her the best in the new role. And then, and then lastly, you know, I truly look forward to representing the residents of Bridgewater in my district slash precinct, precincts one. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Counselor Colm Bodas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, get a good sense of how things are going to go from now on. I, I like the mood in the room, and it's good to have some a new face and Eric Moore and see some old co-counselors. So yeah, I'm optimistic. I think we're, we're we're going to be in a good place. I do regret the fact that we are all, that we're council of nine white men. I think a little more diversity, different kinds of voices would be helpful. So maybe next time, next year, we can get some different types of voices on the council. So with that, good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Colm Bodas. Counselor Wood?
Thank you. Well, a lot of people covered all the subjects. Kevin covered the Lions reports. I don't need to do that. Congratulations to the leadership. Congratulate to congratulations to the, the new members and returning members. I do want to thank Peter Colm Bodas for stepping up. He, he did give the district ample time to come up with another representative before he took action to come back to the council. It was well advertised. Well, you know, there was a lot of outreach to the, to the district. But apparently, there wasn't any, any other interest. So I want to thank him for coming back for some more time on the council. I want to touch on two other things that are of critical importance. If you ever have dinner over here at the house, you'll see that the conversation is energetic around the dining room table. And I'm going to thank my wife for, for, for these words. And I'm paraphrasing. She said it better, but as a council, as a town, we need to determine our own future. And I think we've gone through a lot of the motions about, you know, budget process and things like that, but we get lost sometimes in a lot of the strategic aspects of the council. And I'm speaking directly to things like the zoning ordinances that were modified several years ago that made the Broad Street project even possible. And I want to call it the Broad Street Revitalization Project, because that's really what it was. It was a, an effort to bring foot traffic to downtown, to bring new businesses to downtown, to revitalize that segment of Broad Street and which would carry forward into Central Square and other areas. And it was, I'm not going to point fingers at anyone. I'm just going to say the whole process was a mess. And, and I think that, you know, as a council, we can take a little bit of blame for that, because as we went through the process of the allocation of bonus points, which were critical to this project, it became clear to me that the process was a real mess. And I agree with Mrs. Hanson where she said, you know, about the agreement. So, so that's something we need to clean up, because at the next project, the next developer, very early on in the process, needs to clearly understand what's on the table, because we saw plans change three, four, five times. We saw landscaping plans change, modify many times. And it wasn't until the very end of about an eight-month process that the developer knew how many units he was going to get. And that's something that needs to be done upfront, especially when you're, when you're talking about adjustments to zoning and where a special special permit is allocated. So, so we need to work to clean that up, because without that, no other developer is going to touch us for this type of project, where developers willing to give the town almost a million dollars worth of assets in exchange for bonus points. If the, if the developer can't understand that there is a contract with the town that's solid throughout the process, you can't just make a policy, you know, six, seven months, six months in, seven months in, eight months in, and modify everything on the fly, and then come up with the final decision that doesn't work for everybody. So we need to really improve that. Otherwise, you know, we don't control our own future. And this is a, this body here creates policy. There's no other body in the, in the, in the, in the town that creates policy. We create policy that other member bodies enact and, and carry forth. So we need to, we need to improve that. And that's also the reason why you saw at the last planning board meeting, for those that were paying attention, there was a presentation by a developer who was looking to buy the Perkins Foundry. Until then, it wasn't really public information. We've been talking about the, the Broad Street revitalization process and how it would have been good had the developer met with the planner, planning board, etc., upfront to discuss the concepts in more detail before pen was taken to paper. So the effort here is to get the developers in front of the people that make the decision and go through some of the concepts, because I'm not going to go into any of the details. But if we don't do that and we don't handle it well, it's going to be just as, as much, it's just going to be messy, just like the Broad Street revitalization. And, you know, we're going to get a bad reputation or worse than we already have. So when I said we need to determine our own future, that's that when we go into the zoning code and make changes or look at business, you know, utilization, or look at the question I asked last week, which was, how much industrial space do we have? We need to think, be thinking with a wide angle lens and think about the impact that a particular project has, not only on the project itself, but the surrounding businesses, the surrounding community, and extended out into the town of Bridgewater. So, you know, that's, that's what I'm hoping this new council, we've got new members on the council, we've got returning members on the council, we've got a fresh group of people to look at these problems. And I'm hoping that we can take a solid effort of, level of effort to come up and work through this, because I tell you, we, we can't go through another nine months and not know how many wheels are on the car before, you know, we get an approval where a developer can't work with it. And I'm hopeful that he comes back and actually does something, but I'm doubtful he will, based on the article that was in the Enterprise, based on other conversations with people I've had. I've had a number of conversations with the businesses surrounding that piece of property. They were definitely looking forward to having an improved Broad Street. And right now, we have nothing, and we have nothing for the foreseeable future. And I, I think we just need to focus on, on that aspect, because if we can't get one project done, we can't do Central Square, we can't do downtown revitalization. We can't figure out why the demographics don't support more business in Bridgewater, why we don't have more industrial space. So we need to take a very, very wide angle lens with a strategic input and create some policy to make it possible to, to improve that environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Wood. I will try to be very brief, considering the time. It's nine forty-four. I would say a very privileged and honored to serve as your president and thank all the members of the council for supporting me this evening. I hope to do the best job that I can. I specifically want to cut out, call out past president Counselor George. In the last several weeks, many of the communications that we've had and over the course of the year, really get a true understanding of the amount of time, effort, and energy. And, and many of you that have served as prior presidents certainly understand and appreciate that. So I just wanted to say with COVID and everything that's going on, and some of the, you know, issues that have come before the council really been impressed by Counselor George and his leadership. And when he started out the meeting earlier tonight about some of the accomplishments, I think you kind of get lost at how much has been accomplished during COVID, remote meetings, trying to get back together, going back remote. He's really done an incredible job, and I hope that I can do a good job filling his shoes. With that said, I would just put out a reminder, the ad hoc committee, if you could please email me if you're interested in assisting with Ann's replacement, I would like to receive an email and have that decided by Friday. Committee assignments, again, all subcommittee assignments, please reach out to Ann with your top three choices. I'd like to move on that very quickly as well. And then lastly, I would just want to mention that back in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And this entire week is Police Appreciation Week. I would say that as a community collectively, we're very, very lucky. First, the leadership that's provided to our local police department under Chief Del Monte. But all of the offices and recruitment efforts that go into really establishing one of the finest police departments in Southeastern Mass. And I would just urge members of the council that many of our own police officers, although no, not having been involved in national level incidents, have taken the brunt of that anger locally. And I would just, it would be nice if people just take a minute, and I'm asking citizens to consider doing something nice, and that's as simple as saying thank you to an officer that you might see in a store or on a location or stopping in the police station or just publicly on Facebook. I truly appreciate it, and I think it's well deserved. We really have a fantastic group of police officers, and this week is really to recognize them and many of the officers who have been killed in the line of duty since the early sixties. So with that, I would move on to our next item, which is Q, executive session. We have none, and I will move to our adjournment and attain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I would move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Colm Bodas?
He adjourned or?
All right, moving on. Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against.
Excellent. That's it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.